It is Paul C. Cantley. Uh, if you have a cell phone or hold on that paper, please send it some. Um. I don't see anybody wearing any hats. Uh, yes, uh, um, if you do need to call to your neighbor, I would ask that you please step outside and do the move as you can help. If you go over. So. You need a cup of coffee, you guys can give it to your wife. But please, if you need to talk to somebody next to you, please step outside and just wait a few minutes. And then step outside and do the move. Thanks.
Six oh five, meeting is now called to order. Lieutenant, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Establishment of Court.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Maria Reyes here. Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
Ivan Colombia-Lowes.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court.
Item number four, Public Comment.
We have several speakers. Our first speaker is David Estrada. Mr. Estrada, you have three minutes.
David Estrada, and I would like to ask you for permission on item number ten, which a lot of the people that are present today, uh, we're here for item number ten. I'd like for you to extend, um, my time during that item. We have a PowerPoint presentation and it's probably gonna take about five, six minutes. So I'd ask you to, to please consider that. Uh, it's very respectful PowerPoint, nothing bad. But, uh, it has some pictures in there and, uh, pictures are worth a thousand words.
Ms. Reyes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, move item number ten to after the, uh, or is it, do you want it before the presentation? Or after the presentation? After public comments? After public comments? Okay, after public comments.
Will, will you extend the time other than, than just three minutes for the presentation?
That's the decision we have to do. She's asking to move right now.
One second.
Before can we place it, Mr. Martinez?
After public comment.
After public comment? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duran?
Uh, couldn't we place it after number five? Because we have the, um, school board here. There are a lot of people from the school board. And that way they can do their presentation and then move on.
Can you make the motion right now? We need to allow the public comment and then after the public comment, then you can make the motion.
Thank you. No other comments right now.
Mr. Estrada, you have three minutes. Salvador Herrera. Bernie Salcedo. Mr. Salcedo, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor Garcia, Council. And you. Uh, we're here tonight on item number ten, once again, for the Rancho Medieval Estates. And we're opposing the development to come through our streets and use those as the main through pairs. We'd not currently meet the size of the street for that type of, uh, traffic. Uh, there's an ordinance here that you all have for collector's streets to be minimum thirty-five feet. Tres Caballos is thirty foot wide or five foot short in that. And that's the one that's gonna be impacted the most. I don't think it'd be safe to do that at this time. I think we need to put the infrastructure in place. Uh, this developer needs to acquire their own easements. They need to acquire their own roadways that will lead into North Loop for safety purposes. Uh, and then I would like to refrain some more additional time for item number ten under the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Damian Pilatsky. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, other distinguished members. I'm Damian Plasky. I'm a resident of Rancho Medieval Estates. I'm also here because I want to speak on item ten. But one of the things that I've seen in the process has caused me alarm about the process, uh, that we're going, that this, uh, has gone through. And that is that the developer was asked to produce a traffic assessment. That traffic assessment then was done and accepted. But it is so obviously flawed that it makes me wonder what the acceptance, uh, criteria was. I live on a street that has maybe a hundred cars that travel down it. We have a stop sign onto North Loop. And sometimes we have five or six cars waiting up to fifteen minutes to get onto North Loop. If we have this development go through and drive on our ranch, on Rancho Viejo Drive, some additional thousand cars, we have maybe twelve hundred cars going through trying to exit onto North Loop because that is really the only route that they would have. That's, you know, ten, twenty times as many cars waiting in line. Could be up to a hundred and twenty cars. The assessment stated that there would be minimal impact. Having a hundred and twenty cars backing up, uh, half a mile to three quarters of a mile down Rancho Viejo, our Rancho Viejo Drive, taking over an hour to get onto North Loop. And it's going to get worse as traffic continues to increase on North Loop. That is not minimal, uh, impact. And for the process to accept the report as it was written, uh, when it's so obviously flawed, uh, makes me concerned about the process. I would also like to have some time to speak, uh, during the, our forewriting number ten. Thank you.
Lincoln Wallace. Mr. Wallace, you have three minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all for your service, first of all. Uh, my name is Lincoln Wallace. I currently own a house on Tierra Este, which is the intersection of Tierra Fertile and Edgemere by El Dorado High School. My wife and I currently, are currently also own a house on 415 Rancho Viejo, which we purchased in June. We have yet to move in because we're renovating, uh, the house. Last night, I gave Mr. Salcedo a call after receiving, uh, the notice of this meeting and that's why I'm here. So I have very little, um, information pertaining the overall project itself. But some of the things that I've already observed, uh, with my limited exposure to the area, is, um, the infrastructure as currently unstated. With one street going in to a, to a, uh, to a dead end, if you will, uh, opening one more street with the traffic backed up, there's nowhere else to go. I currently experience where I'm at, uh, trying to get onto Edgemere, it's almost as if you're playing Frogger at times, the whole video game, where every time you, you get to the stop sign, you're putting your own life in, in your own hands, okay? Um, I understand the challenges when it comes to development. We want to encourage that. But as I was, uh, crossing the street here, I was humbled, uh, looking for a place in a crosswalk to simply get across the street. Okay, so I understand on one hand, this is a small community. But before we invite outside investors, uh, ensuring that our current infrastructure is up to par, before we invite more growth, seems like a more responsible thing to do. Not to say that I don't encourage it, but there's a process that should be examined. And as the gentleman brought up previously, getting on the highway here before five o'clock, it was already a traffic jam. And for a traffic assessment to be done between the hours of zero seven and three o'clock or three thirty, doesn't seem real reasonable. When we all know that the traffic doesn't get heavy until about five o'clock. So that is the very first step that I'm looking at going, okay, what else are we looking at here, uh, when it, when it comes to going forward? So like I said, I understand the challenges of growth. But I would like to just say and to continue to encourage you that, uh, before we do that, let's look at the, those people that we have here and what issues that they are already experiencing. And if we're having people come into the community, then ask them to take up those extra steps to ensure the people that are already here, their investment is also protected. Thank you.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. Rene Rodriguez walked into the meeting at six ten. Jesús Cabrera. Mr. Cabrera, you have three minutes.
I'm Jesús Cabrera and I live in, uh, Tres Caballos, right on the street of the, the, this development that wants to get in. And I don't think it's fair. We've been working all these streets for ourselves, take care of the streets. All this community has been very peaceful, peaceful. No complaints about, you know, criminality or something like that. And, uh, that developer has a lot of money. They can do roads whatever they want. They can buy a RV, they can buy anywhere. Just what I'm asking, this is probably the last time. We've been dealing this for a year. I'm getting tired of this. And, um, what I want is to tell you that the developer has a lot of money, they can make roads. The, on the last meeting, last week or two weeks ago, on, on planning and zoning, they don't have a plan for schools. They don't have a plan for security. They don't have a plan for fire department. Besides, our roads is not enough even for evacuating in case of a fire. So the only thing I'm asking is tell the developer to do their own roads, buy RV, properties to, to get more roads. They need over sixty feet wide, uh, roads. Just leave it alone. Leave us alone. And one thing, I just wanna remember you. Myself and all these people vote for you. And that's why you sitting there, to make a wise decision. I think that's your turn. That's all what I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Salcedo. Ms. Salcedo, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Sandy Salcedo. Good evening. I don't live in, yeah, well. I, I don't live there, but I live on Patty Joan Horizon. And I understand that the, the problem is, the problem is all the traffic. Okay. What about us? In Horizon Boulevard? We can't even get out through Patty Joan. So we already have all that traffic. What's gonna happen there? All this is, is done with all that traffic. And another thing, we don't even have enough policemen to take care of all that traffic if there's an accident. So I'm asking you, please, do something about it. Don't pass it. Thank you. Thank you.
Joey Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm here with everybody here on item number ten as well. Uh, I'm, I agree with them all. We don't have the infrastructure in place to help this split subdivision. I'm okay with growth. I think it's a good thing. But there's a right way to do it and a wrong way to do it. And I want you all to consider the right thing. We need other things in place. We need, for one, sewer, water. Better roadways. I mean, what's in place now doesn't work with what we have there. Can you imagine with all the other people? It'll just make it that much more worse. Yeah, the solution, they say maybe I'll stop that. It's only gonna make it worse because now you're gonna be backing up more people. Not only there at Rancho Viejo, Anderson Road, North Loop. It's just gonna make it even more of a cluster. I think there's other options. I think they need to be looked into more. And I don't think we should make a decision tonight. I think you should research it some more and, uh, make a better decision. I understand progress is coming and we ain't gonna stop. And it's a good thing for all of us, but we need to do it the right way. And think of everybody else, not just one developer. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you. Naomi Scott. Ms. Scott, you have three minutes.
Uh, yes, hi. I'm also a constituent and I also live on Rancho Viejo. Like, we all stated, we have been here for over a year just battling this agenda here. On the last visit that we had here, we had the recommendations of opinion and zoning as to what needed to be met. It was denied for those reasons because they felt that there was more that needed to be done. The infrastructure, the storage range, the soil analysis, the traffic analysis, the environmental, the covenants of the, the restrictions, construction schedules. There was so much that was asked of them to do before we could even do anything. I'm hearing that maybe they already did the traffic analysis. This is the first thing I've heard of it. I don't agree with what came out of it, if that is correct, because I felt that it was done maybe on the wrong hours. Uh, we hired you all to listen to us. We put you here to listen to the city of here at Socorro. I understand that there is growth. We want growth, but we need to be consistent and we need to do things right for, for everybody, not just one builder. We cannot bend the rules for one builder. This is a time where we need to stop and put impact, impact, everything that needs to be done right and don't bend. And make sure that we're consistent with everyone that comes into the city of Socorro so that we don't run into all these issues that we have right now. We have so many issues with drainage right now, with traffic. We can't even meet our own demand what we have right now with the citizens that we have here. I can't imagine what y'all are going to create for us that live here and yourselves because we're trying to make, get, make a little bit more money? We need to balance. We need to do things right. Please listen to your constituents. We put you here for a reason. You are our voice. Please listen. Thank you.
Johnny Teles. Salvador Griego. Jose Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I've been a resident of this area for approximately three years now. Um, when my wife and I first purchased, uh, the property there on Rancho Viejo, it was a bear in law. We built our house, uh, from scratch. Because we like the neighborhood, the tranquility and the peace there, it's, it's just amazing. And, uh, we've, like, like they said, we've been fighting this battle for a little over a year now. And, uh, it, it's just, the infrastructure that we have available to us now, can't handle the traffic that's, that, that we have current. And I'm not just talking about Rancho Viejo or Prescal House. It's already on, on North Loop. So once we build all those houses and that traffic starts coming through our community, I mean, it, it's just unfair to put the, the people of Rancho Viejo Drive through that. Some of these people have been there for thirty years. I've only been there three. But I just ask you to please take that into consideration. I mean, we, our children are growing up there. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just unfair. You guys are here for us and we, we expect you to listen to us. We expect you to, to carry out our wishes. That's, that's what you're here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Valdez. Mr. Valdez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Tony Valdez. I'm a resident of Rancho Marival, uh, of Rancho Viejo. And I think that there's a lot of, um, people here who have, um, demonstrated and showed and we will show during the PowerPoint presentation, some of the flaws that, that, um, I've seen, uh, while living there. I've lived there for over approximately fourteen years. And we've heard time and time again, the flaws, the, the traffic, the infrastructure, the, it, the, the schools that are necessary to, to be available before we even start thinking about expanding that area. That area is basically considered agricultural area. I mean, and the houses there that we have are usually about half, uh, well, an acre to more than one acre. So these are big lots. And the lots that are proposed are not gonna be that big. So we have a, now we have a place where we can call home. And we, myself, talking about myself and my family, we have enjoyed living there. And we hope to keep on enjoying that type of living conditions, which it's very difficult to find now here in El Paso. There's only a few places. So it's up to you to set the precedence here, to set the legacy. Because whatever you do right now is gonna reflect in the future. And whatever mistakes you make, they're also gonna show. So hopefully you will make the right decision. And, um, I'm requesting additional time later on during the PowerPoint presentation as well. So please, make the right decision. I know that you can do it. I have faith in you. Thank you.
Mayor, and those were all our speakers. Item number five, presentation by Daniela Escobar from Socorro Independent School District regarding bond two thousand seventeen.
Yes, Mayor Garcia and Council, thank you for allowing us the time to, to, uh, speak to you about the Socorro Independent School District bond. My name is Jose Espinoza, the proud, proud superintendent of Socorro ISD. And I know there's some, uh, couple of, there's some individuals here that I'd like to quickly introduce, starting off with our board president, Mr. Paul Guerra, who lives off of North Loop, by the way. Um, also, we have some awesome, awesome principals in our school district, starting off with Mr. Josh DeWart, the principal of Socorro High School right here in the front. Mr. Guerra, could you please stand so they can see you in the back? Go Bulldogs! I see, there you go. I see Ms. Rosie Vazquez from Campestre Elementary, go Cobras. Ms. Macias from Rojas Elementary. Ms. Herrera from Waco. Mr. Guerrero from Socorro Middle. And Mr. Olvera from Serna. Uh, and, uh, Hilly, he has a function, oh no, he did make it. Mr. Miranda from Hilly. See Ms., uh, Mr. Aguirre from Escontrias. And Sanchez is not here. It's not, it's, Ms. Acosta is right over here from Sanchez, did I miss anybody? And I, and we have some awesome employees from our school district as well. Could you just, just wave your hand, guys? Thank you so much, we're representing. Thank you. So myself and Ms. Macias just wanna take some time to share with you what's on the November seventh ballot. And it's the Socorro Independent School District bond. So I wanna just quickly go through it. I believe we are, you ready? We are not ready. So we're waiting for a password. All right. I'll, I'll go ahead and begin while they're giving the passwords set up here. So a little bit about our school district. In Socorro ISD, we now have over forty-six thousand five hundred plus students. Forty-six thousand five hundred plus students. We are a destination school district. We continue to grow. To give you an idea compared to last year, we just finished our ninth week of school. We have about six hundred, seven hundred more students this year than what we had last year. And the same thing happened the year before and the same thing happened the year before. So we have, again, as you can see on the screen, over forty-six thousand five hundred plus students. We have forty-seven campuses. The families, parents across El Paso are taking notice. They wanna bring their little ones to one of our forty-seven schools because they know, they fully understand the type of education that their children are going to receive when they bring them to Socorro ISD. So people in El Paso are taking notice. But people across the state of Texas are also taking notice. You know, I am from Houston, Texas, and most of the population lives in Central, that triangle from Dallas to Austin, San Antonio, over to Houston. And when I moved out here, I sometimes feel that people in Central, East Texas, North, forget about good old El Paso, specifically Socorro. And when I saw this video, when they were talking about the, the, the school districts who have high academic performance at low cost, it really made me proud. It's a video about two minutes and forty-five seconds. This is the, in Austin, Texas, the Senate Committee on Education. So if we can.
I guess my lawyers, you don't wanna do it, take it seriously. Fire it, crack it, and then spend the time in that shop. I, I really can't tell you detail about the time that you brought. At the end of the day, you're not gonna hit bar to it to a beat. You have, it has a system, you have process, you have a very good methods. But then to have some, you're buying or something and, uh, they have some great items. It matters, huh? Do you think there's leadership? This is, this is. It is. It is. Once you love the battlefield, spending and, and considering that is, it is a difference. I'm trying to figure out how to difference, what we can say about that. Well, I think what, what's different is, is there's always a, they know where they should come to. So right now, we have school districts, in fact, we want school districts, uh, represented with, uh, certified, like, like, for, they're, they, they lost. So they're generally very high in their outcomes and very low loss. But, but there's none, there's no reporting, or there's no tracking. So they don't, they don't realize it. There's no credit, I just, that's just, that's what they do because of their, their. At the end, to the school, it's a very, uh, this is changing. Uh, you know, it's a, this is, it is something that you should, is that is a sustaining also, which is a great source, uh, that, uh, that though, that on one side is, that's, that's special. The rest of the schools, we don't know. More of them are here, they're more of a loving, they have tremendous positive value. Now, just back to there's plenty of models out there that are running extremely well. It's just that they're not, they're not, they're not great. Okay, so the positive you said that are available. You're talking about, uh, the, the, those models. Again, performance models, you wanna find good, good ones, do it best. Just like sports, one of the, that's the ball, they're, they're off, they're probably, they're, they're. You can't have a good dish. Once you identify those school districts that are doing, doing the best job, then they come off certain goals. Uh, what I'm saying is, is because we've not looked at the data, it's all, who, who are all those school districts? And, uh, for, most people want to look at Socorro, they have laws. But that's where they are. So, so if you wanna get better, who are your models? Those are your models.
So that was in the Texas Senate Committee on Education. And there's a lot said there, you know, but one of his last comments, most people wouldn't put a district like Socorro in that top box when you compare them to some of the districts across the state of Texas, over a thousand two hundred. Reasons being, oh, it's a border district. Oh, there's lots of, uh, English language learners. Uh, there's a lot of, it's a might predominantly minority population. But we have awesome principals, like we have awesome board members like Mr. Guerra, awesome students and parents, you know, will show Austin, Texas and Central Texas, East Texas, what we can do. So people across the state are, are, are taking notice. So it makes me proud as, 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 as a superintendent to see it being, uh, you know, no, noticed statewide. So now, a little bit about the bond. You know, when, when people hear the word bond, first thing that pops in people's minds many times is, well, what's my tax rate gonna be? And that's what we're here, giving that information. But also what work would be done if the bond passes? And I personally have done about eighty of these presentations to get the word out to as many people as possible. That doesn't even count the meetings and that, that principals have had, that cabinet members have had. So we've done quite a bit, a number of presentations and entertained any questions, concerns that the community may have. So, uh, you know, we say we gotta get out to the city of Socorro. So again, thank you for allowing us, uh, the time. So, so it's a four hundred and forty-eight point five million dollar bond that the, the trustees approved on August fifteenth. A four hundred and forty-eight point five million dollar bond. And what work would be done? Our FAC committee, which you see on the screen, our Facilities Advisory Committee, they did a facilities history, they met the entire summer. They got on a bus and they toured campuses, they toured our warehouse that's not too far from here, uh, by Serna on Tanton Road. And they made a recommendation of six hundred and fifteen million dollars, a six hundred and fifty million dollar bond. The trees, the trustees saw it, that's, oh my goodness, that'd be, it's a lot of money. It'd be a huge tax burden on our taxpayers. They prioritized it down to four hundred and forty-eight point five million dollars on August fifteenth. So what work would be done? The FAC priority, our Facilities Advisory Committee and our trustees priority, was the reconstruction of Socorro High School. And many of y'all know. And many of y'all know Socorro High School is our oldest high school in Socorro ISD. It was built over fifty years ago. And over fifty years ago, it was actually built as a middle school. You compare the facilities, Socorro High School, you take a drive to Pebble Hills or East Lake area, it's like night and day. Our students, we want them to have the same type of, of opportunities, we want them to have the same type of, of facilities, doesn't matter what part of the district that they live on. So the reconstruction of Socorro High School, that's, was a top priority, as I said, of our trustees and our FAC committee. Okay, so other work that would be done if the bond passes on November 7th, which early voting begins on Monday, October twenty-third. We are a destination district, and sometimes, you know, that's, that's, that's pretty, pretty nice to be part of a, of a growing district, but there's some challenges, and there's some scary, scary situations. And specifically, in the Pebble Hills area of Socorro ISD, and the East Lake area of Socorro ISD, if you haven't taken the time, or maybe you've driven by, you see all those roads that they are making, all these homes that are going up, subdivisions left and right. As a superintendent, as board members, the scary part is, oh, all these homes are being built, families are coming in because they want to bring their little ones to Socorro ISD. The question is, where are we going to put all these students? And to give you an example, Butler Elementary, Lujan Chavez Elementary, if you were to buy a home right across the street of one of those two schools, and you take your child, your kinder child, your second grade child, to enroll at Butler or Lujan, that school will probably tell you, congratulations on your new house, but there's no more room for your child at my school. There's no more room. We have to overflow you because every single classroom's at capacity. So we overflow them to other schools in our district, Chester Jordan, Purple Heart, Antoinne. And they're going to receive just as an amazing education at those schools, as they would at Butler and Lujan. But I just believe that if you buy a home, you should be able to go to your neighborhood, your neighborhood school. And to give you the number, we have, in Socorro ISD, over a thousand three hundred students, a thousand three hundred students that are overflowed, that they just can't attend their neighborhood school, that we have to provide the transportation for, for many of them. Some of them, their parents will take them on their own. But a thousand three hundred that cannot attend their neighborhood school. So three schools would be built, one elementary school in the Pebble Hills area, a middle school in the East Lake area, and an elementary school in the East Lake area as well. Other work that would be, that would be done if the bond passes, these sixteen schools that you see there on the list, and it's all of the elementary schools here in the Socorro feeder pattern, you see Campestre, Escondrillas, Hilly, Waco, Rojas, and, did I miss one? Escondrillas. Those, these schools, along with the other ones, they don't have multipurpose rooms. And a multipurpose room is those, if you can, hopefully make out that picture, it's basically a small gymnasium for students. That's a picture of Mission Ridge Elementary, and also Sushuk Elementary. These multipurpose rooms are very valuable for many reasons, but let me give you one reason. If it's cold outside, or if it's inclement weather, you know, it's too windy or too hot outside, well, if you're at Sushuk, come on, we'll continue our physical activities in our multipurpose room. If you're at Rojas, if you're at Hilly, or Campestre, one of these sixteen schools, they have to play, some coaches, they put them on a stage, some coaches, they'll take them in a small classroom, all the kids just crammed in there, pop a health video and, and, and watch the health video. Another coach says, well, I do, I find an empty hallway, try to do some type of activity. Where if you're at these other schools, you know, they, they continue their physical, they can continue their physical activities in these multipurpose rooms. So sixteen multipurpose rooms would be built, and again, all of these, the school, elementary schools here, in the Socorro feeder pattern, don't have any, and so every single school here would be receiving one. Other work that would be done, we have some awesome athletes, some amazing athletes in Socorro ISD. Softball, baseball, matter of fact, last year, our Socorro High School baseball team went three rounds deep in baseball. Those games start at four o'clock because there's no lights at the softball fields and baseball fields. So if the bond passes, lights would be added to softball, the softball fields in our school district, in our high schools, in our school district, and along with our baseball fields as well. Also, a new student activity complex, an additional SAC. We have the beautiful SAC there on Joe Battle and Bob Hope. Beautiful. The, the only problem we have is that it was built in nineteen ninety-two. And it was built in nineteen ninety-two when Socorro ISD had two high schools, Socorro High School and Montwood High School. So it was perfect. One football field, two schools, two football teams. The problem now is that in two thousand seventeen, we have one football field and six high schools with Pebble Hills, El Dorado, East Lake, we have six high schools now. Well, now it becomes a, an issue, specifically a scheduling issue. Now we have to schedule double hitters throughout the football season, on Friday nights, two games, once, the first game starts at four, second one starts around six thirty, seven o'clock. Sometimes we also have to schedule double hitters on Thursdays. Matter of fact, that happened last week, and two games on Thursday, two games on Friday, the first weekend of football. Pebble Hills played Irving on a Thursday at four o'clock. And at four o'clock, these students have these football equipment on, the band, our amazing bands they have, they're in their band uniforms, some of those instruments are pretty heavy, the cheerleaders, the coaches. It is hot. It is hot. It's a safety issue. As a matter of fact, that first, that first day, one of our employees ended up in the hospital because he dehydrated. So it's a scheduling issue. It also impacts instruction. You have four o'clock games, you have to pull the kids, the students out of class early. And y'all know it, students hate being pulled out of class early, right? But they have to be pulled out of class early. So if the bond passes, an additional SAC, a smaller one, as you can see on the screen, one that seats about six thousand to eight thousand seats would be built. Now, Ms. Macias will continue with what other work would be done if the bond passes, along to, as well, to address what the tax rate would look like for Socorro ISD.
Mayor Garcia, City Representative, Maribel Macias. If the bond were to pass, we also have support services. The items for support services is we currently have our warehouse at Tanton Road. Our district is a hundred and thirty-five square miles. Whenever we have our maintenance and operations and our technicians that start their day there, whenever they have a work order, oftentimes it takes them thirty-five minutes to an hour if they have to cross our district to do some of the work orders. So if the bond were to pass, we're looking at a centralized location. The other reason for the centralized location is that currently, our warehouse metal facility built in nineteen sixty, when it rains outside, it also rains a little bit inside. And in that right top corner, we have our NOC, our Network Operations Center, which are technology infrastructure. So we, at this point, want to make sure that all of our information is secure. So if the bond were to pass, we would want to centralize that facility. On the bottom, we have transportation. We currently have our mechanics, amazing. We have our fleet, we have our base. Sometimes there are more buses or vehicles that need to be fixed. So what they do, they do great things, they go outside of the bays, they get the work done, and they get the buses and vehicles back to rolling. What we want to do is build another structure to ensure that they have enough facilities to, to do the work that they do. If the bond were to pass, last year, we had a group of technicians come, and architects, and what they did, they went to Pebble Hills and to East Lake. We have people from across the state, across the city, going to see the great things that are happening inside the classrooms, but they're also looking at the facilities. And what they did is they made a checkoff list. What they did is they compared all of our high schools to Pebble Hills and to East Lake, that Twenty First Century Learning. As you heard, Socorro, Socorro High School would be reconstructed. Montwood, El Dorado, and Americas, we have a list of items that we would improve, again, that Twenty First Century Learning to ensure, which is the arts, which is STEM, science, technology, engineering, the arts, the math, the sciences. So all of our high schools would be comparable throughout our district. So every single student has the same opportunities. These are the items that we have, and what we ask is, we're giving you the data, the information, if you could share it with others, that way they could make an informed decision on November seventh. Hopefully earlier, we have early voting, October twenty-third through November third. But that way they could make an informed decision for our four hundred and forty-eight point five million dollar bond. Reconstruction of Socorro High School, new construction. The one thing that I want to share with the new construction is, what we did is, we modified our boundaries. The reason we did that is, as we're building the new buildings, we are not going to shut down or close down any existing facility. We're maximizing the use of every single facility we have in Socorro ISD. Athletic improvements, multipurpose rooms, support services, and the high school improvements. One thing that is often asked is, what about the tax rate? We've had the same tax rate for the past six years, and our board takes high, 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 how should I say it? They take pride in the fact that they want to ensure that we live within our means. When the Facility Advisory Committee came to them with a list of items, they wanted to ensure that we were still in that reasonable tax rate. At a dollar twenty-seven, we have our maintenance and operations at ninety-eight cents, and twenty-nine cents for our interest and sinking fund. If the bond were to pass, our interest and sinking fund would be the one that would increase. The one thing that we want to share is, at a dollar twenty-seven, our total tax rate is currently below Canotio, Isleta, El Paso, and Clint. If the bond were to pass, the impact would be ten point six cents per one hundred dollar valuation. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar property valued, it would be at eight dollars and eighty-three cents per month, or a hundred and five dollars and ninety-six cents per year. The one thing that our board looked at is, if we add that ten point six cents to our current tax rate, the total tax rate would be at a dollar thirty-eight, which is still below Canotio, Isleta, El Paso, and Clint. As we're going to share this information, we want to ensure that our current citizens, sixty-five years and older, that they know that their taxes are frozen. When we presented, just a couple of weeks ago, we had one of our parents that said, I have no idea, could you help me? So what we did is, definitely, she came in, we went to the Central Appraisal District, shared the information with her on how to fill it out. I saw her the other day, and she said that she officially filled out all the paperwork, and it's submitted. So if you could help us also share that with our constituents, if they're sixty-five years and older, their taxes are frozen, just to get the correct paperwork submitted. Election Day is November seventh, early voting October twenty-third through November third. And we would like your feedback. We're here to serve you like you serve our, our district all the time. What can we do for you?
My, my question is, not my question, my, well, a question for you, because I, I'm going to say my comments. But my question is, when you went out and, and talked to these individuals, what's the feedback you're getting? Do you break it down? Because when you showed us the PowerPoint, it, it, from what we got presented at the committee, it's totally different with you presenting, because you're compounding everything into sports and, and education and stuff like that, but you don't really break it down. And one of the things that I've been asked, I've, I've been asked by twenty-six people, a lot of questions, and, because they seen it on Facebook, you know, everywhere, the signs are up. So of course, some of them asked me the same questions, but are you really telling them, giving them a definite breakdown of what it is? Because one of the concerns that I have, and the biggest concern, just like three, but one of the biggest concerns is, how long is it going to take to build Socorro High School? Because you're putting in a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And from what I was told, it might take three to four or five years to build. That's one of the things that people don't like, is that they don't want it to go, because there's some students that, when it was getting an additional wing, some people were saying that it was very hectic for us to go to one side, and then we see the changing fans, the dust, and all of that. And there's their concern that their kids are now going to be put in that predicament. So what is their concern that you face so far?
Well, to, to address, the question, I have Mr. Einkton come up here to address the Socorro part. We do have it broken down. If you, this next slide has a website, if you go to the website, it has it at Americas, this is the work that would take place at El Dorado, this is the work. So it's more specific on, on our website, I mean, we could do it here, but it would be quite a bit.
I'm, I'm just, so people, there's some residents here that might have that same question, like, what is, you know, ninety-two million dollars is going to what? So I mean, so they can also know, because that's what the purpose of you guys are here. The good thing is that we have a, a good subdivision that, that is here, and they can actually, you know, look at it. And, and, and for their knowledge, one of the things, one of the things that, that the concern is, the tax rate.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe, and I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that Rancho Viejo residents are, are going to be able to, you know, pony up the additional one hundred dollars a, a month, but, you know, you need to really understand that as...
It's eight dollars a month.
Well, eight dollars a month, but a year.
Yeah.
So, so for a year, it's over a hundred dollars. The majority of our constituency in Socorro have two jobs. Some family members that I know, even their children have to work after school to help, you know, with, with bills. I mean, I, I get it, I understand, you know, but I mean, that's something that is brought up to me all the time. We as a city haven't, haven't raised taxes for that same purpose, even though we should, and we should be doing that since like four years ago, every year, because we can't maintain all of the projects. But yet, we, 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 we understand what, what the burden of it's for our constituency. But I mean, that's one of the things that I think you would have to address, and let them know that, one, the high school, and two, the tax rate. Because that's something very important for the majority of the constituents.
Let me have Mr. Einkton talk about, one of your questions about Socorro High School, because that question does get asked a lot when we do these presentations about the timetable as far as for Socorro.
Yes, good evening. I'm Tom Einkton, I am the Chief Operation Officer for the, for Socorro Independent School District. As far as any fast-growing district that has to do bonds and stuff, we are always faced with large projects, multi-million dollar projects. East Lake and Pebble Hills were built in phases, when the kids were on the campuses and stuff. Socorro would not be anything different. That's why we looked at it as a reconstruction. We're actually looking for some additional spaces around Socorro High School. But it will be designed, we'll start four projects immediately. Socorro High School will be one, the new elementary school in the Pebble Hills area, the new middle school in the East Lake area, and then we'll start the athletic or the SAC. But as far as the Pebble Hill, I mean, Socorro High School goes, we figure that it's going, if it passes, it'll take nine months to a year to actually design it. And we are looking very, actually, we're looking now at saving some of the existing building and stuff. So how is that going to be phased into the new construction when we start reconstructing it? But any bond, any district, and I've been doing this over forty-five years, you know, you have to, large, multi, multi-million dollar budgets, you have to phase them. We're not selling four hundred and forty-eight million dollars the first year. We're selling the four hundred and forty-eight million dollars in three separate sales. So we're only going to get, I think it's two hundred million dollars the first year if it passes, and then it's divided up. So it, it is going to be a phased project. We are going to have to handle the students, and we understand that, and we've done that on all of our projects. We did over twenty-something renovations to elementary schools and middle schools, where we dealt with kids in the buildings and stuff. So we're very aware of that, and we will, you know, take that into consideration and stuff. But multi-million dollar projects like this, we do have to phase them.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Yanos? I, I, I think I understand where Mr. Renee is saying that, as a realtor, one of the, the first things that, you know, might disencourage the client from moving into that home is the tax, the tax portion of what their yearly taxes are. And so, I know eight point eighty-three per month does not seem a lot, but you'd be surprised how many people cannot afford that, especially here in Socorro. Cannot afford eight dollars and eighty-three cents, because it's not just eight dollars and eighty-three cents here. It's fifteen dollars over here, it's ten over here, it's twelve over there. Everything increases. And so now it's become, you know, now you have to save two hundred dollars extra a month, just to survive. So, and I understand where you're coming from. And yes, I also have heard that when you guys have some kind of project, whether it's an older school or a newer school, the residents that live along the, the line of the construction are always inconvenienced, and, and, and they're never listening.
and, and, and they're never listened to. So, and I understand where he's coming from. So I just thought I'd add that, but, um, good luck, good luck, uh-
Thank you.
To, to the project.
I just wanna add that I'm not in no way, shape, or form, you know, you know, heckling you guys. I'm just saying that these are concerns that were brought up to me. Um, like I said, twenty-six individuals came up and said, "Hey, you know, what about this, what about that." Um, genuine concerns, you know, one of the biggest, like I said, was the school, how long is it gonna take? So, uh, the other issue was the money, that they're gonna have to, you know, pay in their taxes. Um, uh, some of the people that I hear, and like, out of those twenty-six, I think eighteen of them said, "Wow, we're gonna need another SAC, that's gonna cost us something, about seventeen million dollars" from what the notes that I had last time, uh, in the committee. Um, I, I, you know, that's one of those things that they said, "Well, you know, you know, we, we understand that, that the, the city is growing, but I mean, all the high schools are being built. They're, they're, they're building palaces up north, but we have so many old schools here that, you know, when it, when it's time for them to revamp our thing." Um, the majority of those, uh, twenty-two of them specifically said, "Well, they're gonna move everything away from Socorro where this is where they started." You know, so I mean, it's, it's one of those issues that our constituency, it, it has issues. Like I said, you know what, it's a good bond, it's a good bond, we need to rebuild Socorro. I, I understand that, you know, we, we need to, to, uh, keep up with the times, with the growth, you know, um. I'm just saying that those were the concerns. Like I said, we need the bond. We need the bond because, you know, it's our flagship, and that's what I tell people. It's our flagship, it's about time that we actually invest in our flagship. Because that's all we got, you know? And I, and I, I, I will say it, and I'll keep saying it, you know? It's a good bond, I know that there's some issues, you know, uh, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we just have to let people know that we are working at it, and that, you know, it's, it's the best for our community, you know? And, uh, I don't know how the, the rest of, of the board feels, but, you know, it's a good bond. And it's about time, you know what I think, thank you guys, because it's, uh, it's about time Socorro is, is getting a, a phase there, you know? And, um, uh, I would like to say, I would like to say before this closing, um, the next time we do have a committee, you know, I would love to see residents of Socorro, because the only residents that I saw were up north, you know? Um, so that we can have some input on, on the committee, that's, that's all.
So, yeah. Yes, uh, let me add some on the, the high school process. I, I said it's gonna take nine months to a year to design it. I'm not gonna design it myself. I am a registered architect, uh, but we want input. And we'll have those, what we, architects like to use terms of meetings, and call them threats. And we're gonna involve Mr. Kovar and his, his administration. We're gonna get students involved, and we want community people involved. So that whole process, that's why it's gonna take nine months to a year to, to design that. So we want input.
And, and talk, and talking about, uh, projections, I do have a question in regard to the turnaround time. And I understand that this is all projections, but once the design phase is passed, what are the projections for the actual phasing in of the construction for the, for the building?
It would take, I'm gonna say at least minimum of two years, it could take three years. Uh, but my track record on, and I don't like the quote, my, my track record on the two thousand eleven bond, we finished everything within a year and a half ahead of schedule, and thirty-seven and a half million dollars under budget.
And my only concern is, as an educator, um, the transition time for the kids has had, uh, I, I remember our class was the first one to use the old junior high and the high school portion together. And there was a bear to get from one end of the building to the other, and so as it is now, that's, that's an issue. And because of the, of the, of the transfer or the transition time, that, that to me is also kind of, uh, a concern, because you've got kids with heavy backpacks and those kinds of things. And so that's one thing that I wouldn't wanna make any longer than it absolutely has to.
Yes, and, and we'll definitely look at that. But that's, that was out of the nature of the, it started out of the middle school, and then it was added on, added on, added on. And, you know, so hopefully, in the reconstruction, if, if it passes, you know, we can then sit and combine it and, and, and provide more parking and access and, and accessibility.
Thank you.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes, sir. Uh, my question to you would be is, if you're gonna do the first phase, and we've done the, uh, the first part of the architect, and then we do the schooling of, you know, the construction, how long would it be for the second phase in order to get the, the amount? Because this is a very large bond.
Yes.
And we'd like to know more or less, because the constituency will, um, is this gonna take, how long is this gonna take? Are they gonna include some of the same things that the upper schools got? We're figuring air, expand, parking, okay, state-of-the-art, uh, computers, most kind of things. So we don't wanna be, get stuck in it.
Yes.
We want, we want, we want exactly whatever it is.
And, and, and that's what Ms. Masias mentioned when the architects came down in, in two thousand and sixteen, in the spring, and did the comparison. They used our newer high school as a comparison. So everything's gonna be di- uh, designed and based off our new high school. So we're gonna, you know, Socorro High School's gonna start, like I said, initially, the very first one, and it's gonna be continually going until it's finished. And hopefully, it'll be in that two, less than three-year timeframe.
And it's just phase one?
No, that's the completion.
That's the completion?
That is the total, it's the, yes, total. The, the three sales of the bonds, it will be continuously, but we'll have enough money to can, to start, uh, Socorro in the first sale if it passes, and then continue on with it.
There won't be an interruption in, in the construction, in case of it?
No.
As far as the money's concerned, because you, we keep doing the construction anyway?
No, it'll be a continuous construction.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank y'all, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, can, would you entertain a motion to move item number eleven, and then item number ten, and continuing on in order?
I'll make a motion to move up item number eleven in the agenda.
Second.
And number ten?
Okay, so it would be- Okay, so then, all right, I apologize. Then I'll, at this time, I'll go ahead and, uh, make the motion to, uh, move up items ten and eleven on the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Hi.
Maria Reyes?
Hi.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
Ivan Colombia Lo?
Yes.
Which one are we gonna do first?
Eleven, eleven. I'm- Eleven.
No, no, he said ten.
Item number eleven, discussion and action to approve submittal to the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Alternatives, TA, set-aside program call for projects for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, fund safe routes to school application, and active transportation project application. Also to direct staff to create a resolution for the nominator projects to be approved by council with the commitment of the twenty percent contribution.
Motion to approve item number eleven before discussion?
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Hi.
Maria Reyes?
Hi.
So why are we taking?
Oh, she took.
Discussion?
Okay, go.
She did take the vote.
No.
No, 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 we, we want the presentation, because that's what they need to know, what we're present, what, what it is.
It's, uh, can we hold off on the, on the vote?
Yeah, we, we'll hold off on the vote.
And can we send your motion?
No, I, I don't, we-
No, we have to make the motion. We have to make the motion.
We already made a motion, and we've approved, and it's a, we can send the motion.
No, but we're taking the vote.
No, 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 we're not gonna take the vote, we're not gonna take the vote.
No, we're, we're holding off on the vote.
Yes, we're holding off on the vote.
So, okay.
Korea, take Korea.
Okay, good afternoon, uh, honorable council and mayor. Um, we're here representing Denham Bomb Engineering, your, your firm, engineering firm. My peer, Gabby Ramos, uh, professional engineer, and myself, Rossi Gardena, as Public Information Officer for El Paso, Texas office. And, uh, we were tasked by the city, um, administration to apply to this, um, to proceed, you know, to, to check into the, uh, the new, the latest call for projects for the El Paso MPO. And this is, this is the transportation alternatives, um, set-aside program call for projects for fiscal year two thousand eighteen funds. The highlights of this project is, um, I provide you all the history there. However, I understand that we're, we're a little bit short on time, and I wanna make it as brief as possible. Um, the most important thing in here is that it will, um, help us with the continuity of the safe routes to school. And, uh, basically, this program, um, uh, is applicable and eligible for the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure associated with safe routes to school projects that will substantially improve safety and the ability for students to walk and bicycle to school. And very nice to see that the district, Socorro Independent School District, was here. Uh, we have received a letter, I wanted to thank them that they left. We have received a letter, uh, uh, for support for this, uh, for this, uh, project. Um, let me see, go, okay. Um, the highlights are that, um, this is, this, uh, call for projects approximately ha- um, provides a million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and ninety dollars available to fund the construction phase of eligible set-aside program projects for the El Paso MPO planning area. Uh, the transportation planning, uh, board will be selecting projects and authorize funding levels, um, of all the provided itemized budgets submitted by us in this case. The incoming, uh, the upcoming deadlines are October eighteenth to the twentieth, which, uh, will be tomorrow. And, uh, we'll be meeting, uh, once, if you, uh, approve, we'll be meeting with the MPO staff to provide them, uh, the draft of the, uh, uh, applications for, for submittal, uh, the following week, where we would be contacting, uh, schools to support this project. So October twenty-seventh, that's when it closes. Wanted to provide you a really quick overview of, of what this will entail, of what this will cover. Uh, we, the administration selected three of the schools, which are the Campestre Elementary School, um, the- Yes. So, um, three of the schools that were fund, okay, the last safe routes to school, uh, pri- um, project that was submitted, uh, which it was phase two, not, uh, these three schools didn't, were, they were not given as much funds, so not all the plan was able to be completed. So the most important areas were the ones that were, um, um, I guess, funded at this point, or were this week? Yeah, so, um, what we're doing, what, what, with this, uh, we will be applying or we'll be proposing to improve for the Campestre Elementary would be the, the streets that you see there on the, on the screen, which would, uh, in red, I'm sorry. Jenny Red, uh, Jenny Road, Laney Road, Ellen Road, Doris Road. Let me just go really quick here. This is the budget, and basically, what we're, what the city is proposing to, to improve is five-inch wide concrete sidewalks, curved ramps, driveway adjustments, um, and miscellaneous ni- miscellaneous items such as, uh, utility signs and mailboxes to accommodate for, for sidewalks. The, the other schools are Ernesto Serna Elementary School and Robert Rojas. All this, uh, yeah, all of the budgets that were, uh, put together for these items, total less than what is, you know, what is offered for the call. So hopefully, you know, that'll be a good high for us there. So for Campestre, the total amount is a hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and twelve dollars. That, and, oh, I'm sorry, that, that doesn't match that, that the city of Socorro will have to put, I'm sorry. The total, um, construction cost would be, oh, the total project, I'm sorry, will be six hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty cents. The local match, or the amount the So- the city of Socorro will have to put for this project for the Campestre Elementary School, proposed improvements, will be a hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and nineteen and twelve dollars. For the Ernesto Serna, the total, um, project cost is three hundred, uh, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three, uh, dollars. And the local match will be sixty thousand five hundred ninety-four and sixty cents. And for the Robert Rojas project, the total project cost is four hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty and thirty-eight cents. And approximately twenty, local match is ninety thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars and eight cents. What, uh, we're seeking today, uh, with, the administration seeking today is, uh, your ratification, uh, to, um, the resolution, perhaps, that will stipulate that, uh, the city of Socorro will, the city of Socorro will commit to provide the required federal match for these projects. And these are needed, needed, uh, improvements in the area, as they were not covered before.
Ms. Perez?
And I'm totally for these projects. I do think that one project may have been overlooked or should have been included or considered. Uh, it would have been, um, Escondrias Elementary, uh, because there is severe flooding there when it rains. There is a lack of, there's a lack of, um, sidewalks on Rio Vista Road, and you have a lot of students that walk to the high school. And so it would not only be for, for the elementary kid, but for the high school kids as well. And so I think that there's, uh, I don't know what the process would be at this point, but certainly for any of, any future funding, uh, cycles, that's something that I would really like for, for Socorro to focus on.
And normally, we always add all of the schools, uh, but the funding was a lot lower this time around. And these are the three schools that got very, uh, small portions of sidewalks in our last phase. That's why we included them, you know, we, they took priority, just because the other ones had gotten a little bit of more miles into it, but we can definitely change, if you wanna add Escondrias and change it to something different.
I don't wanna interrupt any of the process now, no, no, but, but I do wanna make it known that for the next funding cycle, if there is one, because grants are the way they are, um, I would love for the Escondrias area to be included, because it is, there, there's severe flooding. Uh, you have kids walking in the, when it rains, it really rains. And you have students that not only would use it, uh, that, uh, commute or walk to the elementary school, but would use it to also probably get to, to the, um, to the high school via the canal. So again, I, those are things that I would like to, to have considered for next funding cycle, not necessarily now, because I understand the process, but that's something that I would like to-
The last call, I'm, I'm sorry, the last call for projects, to answer your question, that we, we submitted, uh, various schools, because we are, you know, we were, you know, we, we've seen the, the safe routes, I mean, um, the safe routes to school plan, you know? And we want it to give, provide continuity as we have in tasks. But, um, the, the, I guess the funds went somewhere else, and this time around, that was, uh, May two thousand seventeen. So these are for funds for two thousand eighteen fiscal year. But we're, you know, hoping that, you know, we continue trying, getting funds for here for our area.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yeah, one, one of the things is, uh, it's, it's very important for us to apply for these, because like, like, uh, she stated before, they moved funds around and they took it for, you call for seventeen. One of the things, uh, to answer your question, uh, Mr. Perez, is that w- we, we did take it upon ourselves to do a safe route to school plan, but we have to do a citywide.
Right.
The reason why is because on this one, it's also includes areas where they're not for safe routes as well. So there is gonna be a, 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 a mechanism, from what I was told, is that in the future, they're gonna be able to, but there's one specu- there's only one thing about it, is that, um, there have to be shovel-ready projects, if we wanna go outside of, uh, uh, the safe route to school. For example, we have to do our engineering ourselves, we have to do and pay for, um, our, um-
Environmental.
Environmental, and stuff like that. So that basically, they will give us the, we would apply for the funding to build, that's it. So I mean, that's something that we, that's what I was thinking of bringing after the November election, so that we can do a, a more comprehensive plan, citywide, so that we can say, these are the ci- because we don't wanna go overboard and, and apply for something that we're not gonna be able to. We also have to have the money for the twenty percent, those are the things. And when you say that you have to be ready, uh, uh, to start these projects, um, if not, they'll, they'll take away our funding. So I mean, that's, those are things that I'm gonna bring up after the November elections, so that, you know, we don't know what the outcome's gonna be-
And I understand that, and I, and I appreciate that, but I, I, what is the, the parameter or the perimeter for, for safe route to schools if you're saying that there, these are outside of the safe route?
I'm saying some, some, like others, like there's areas like, you know, it's a two mile.
A two mile radius, no.
So anything that falls outside, there's going to be future pla- there, there's speculating there's going to be future for us to go out there and apply for them as well.
But that's my, my point to the contrary is that the area near Escondrias School is very close. And so again, those are, those are areas that are, I mean, it's a main street, it's, it's Rio Vista and, and Beaufort. And so those are areas that, those are where kids walk all the time. And so my concern is exactly that, that being so close to the school and yet there is no sidewalk afforded to the students to walk on. And so again, my concern is that for the next funding cycle, well, not my concern, but my, my, what I'm voicing is that for next funding cycle, I would like for that to be considered.
Ms. Alos?
My concern, and I, I love, you know, I love these projects, we need them. My concern is the, the, the construction, the quality, quality. I mean, because we could put them out there and, you know, six months later, a year, they're already cracked and they have, you know, weeds coming out of them, that's one. Two, there's some, in my district, District Four, there's, there's, there's one street that I can think of right now that instead of helping the residents, it hurt them. Because now the wall, the water, when it rains, the water does not flow out, it stays in their yard. It stays, it goes in their home because of these sidewalks. So the other one is, I believe in front of Escondrias, there is a sidewalk, but it is so low that when it rains, you don't see it, the kids are walking on the streets. So the quality is very, very important. How they're going to be laid out is very, very important. And that they realize that they're not going to hinder the residents with putting these sidewalks. Does that make sense?
Yes, we have, we have talked about this. It's kind of hard to address the drainage issues with these projects because they're strictly for, you know, sidewalks. So any incidentals, like, like I said, the adjustment of maybe water valves or mailboxes, that has to be an incidental and it can't be more than thirty percent of the total project cost. So the drainage issue sometimes can be a little bit cost prohibitive, but we are adding kind of like swales alongside the, the sidewalk so that the water from the street doesn't go towards the property. So we're kind of stopping it at the sidewalk. But anything beyond the sidewalk, which would be the property's owner's right of way, yes, it, it would stay there. Most of these houses were meant to be for onsite ponding. So it's really hard to be able to get the water out from their houses to, to a street that may be higher than, than their house. So that's kind of the issues that, we will look at it, we'll try our best to be, to address it. We're also adding for these projects driveways. They are going to be there, if they, there's any existing driveway, we'll adjust it to make it ADA. And we've even provided a few several ones that they may not have their driveways, so.
How about the quality? Because we're always being compared, that the quality is very cheap, very thin comparing to other communities in El Paso.
Yes, and unfortunately, because it's funding, it's, it's federal funding, they always go with the lowest bid. They can't, normally, when we do our procurement, we'll go with the, you know, most recommended one or the best quality. With Techstat, they don't do that. It, it has to be the lowest bidder. And sometimes, construction companies do come out, I mean, they meet all the specs, however, they do have to go with a construction company. And that's just because, that's pretty much what you, when you get grants, you have to follow those federal guidelines.
That's what Techstat approves and this, this will be a Techstat managed project.
There should be like a year warranty in the contract to where if anything cracks before the year, they, they have to come back and address it.
And redo it. Mr. Laran?
About the quality. I've seen some sidewalks in Campestre area that are already buckled like this. What guarantees are we going to have that the engineering of it is going to be proper? That there's going to be enough rebar, enough reinforcement to keep it from buckling? And also on the, I'm kind of, it says proposed improvements, five inch wide concrete sidewalks. Is that a typo?
Five inch wide?
Five inch wide, it's only that big?
It's five feet.
Okay. I was going to say, that's.
It's not that wide.
Those are sidewalks, pretty good.
Yeah.
It's a tight rope.
But that's one thing that, that I'm worried about is the quality. Are you going to be having, and who is going to be guaranteeing that the quality's there?
We're, well, they're managing the project, but I guess the design has to be a good design, a good set of plans. So it's something, you know, if it's quality, then you'll have that in construction. If, if you can write your plan to a contractor, there's no way, there's no other way for him to do it but that way. And then also have a good construction management, an inspector, someone to be out there and continuously making sure that they're following this plan the correct way. As a designer, I would say the, the buckling of the concrete sometimes is caused by the water itself. So like I said, we are adding swales along there, adding maybe some like gravel. I don't know, with some textile under it to, to keep it there. Just looking at several options that we may have that are not too expensive, that we can still use them for this funding.
Because there's one project that the city did where all the concrete sideways, or sidewalks cracked, the, the curbs cracked, and the, the contractor just came and patched them. Now, if, if this is, if we have cracking, is it going to be patched or replaced?
No, no, that's, that's entirely up to you, you can tell the contractor, you need to fix the right way, not, no patching. You cannot accept that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question. Are the engineering part, once you have it ready, is that something that the council would vote on or you just move forward with the project?
Any design firm that would submit their plans would have to go through review for, through planning.
Okay.
But right now, this is what we're submitting, it's due on October twenty-seventh. We met with Techstat today and we will be meeting with MPO tomorrow, so we can submit on the twenty-seventh, which is next week.
Thank you.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten, discussion and action of preliminary subdivision plan approval for Vista Bonita Estates subdivision, being tract five, block twenty-four, San Luisario Grant.
Motion denied per staff recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Vista Bonita subdivision, this is, I have provided you a couple of copies. One of them has four sets. According to the engineer, they were going to start subdividing, or they were going to start developing the subdivision phases. And the, one of the sets that has all the red marks, these are some of the recommendations that we had agreed on with the engineer. And we had a couple of meetings with some of the residents around the affected areas. And it seems like all the neighbors oppose this project. On the sheet that has the red marks, page number two, this is one of the, on one of the meetings that we had with some of the residents from Rancho Viejo, the engineer had agreed, or the owner of the, of the development had agreed to build a solid rock wall along the perimeter. There is currently an existing forty-five foot easement along the Rancho Viejo subdivision. Another one of the conditions that they agreed on was they were going to replat the entire Rancho Miraval to vacate some of the stopouts that were there for future developments. Where you see the red mark where it says option number two, that is an additional forty-five foot easement that the city requested from this proposed development so that we can create a future ninety-foot major arterial. According to the information that the, the engineer provided us, they tried to negotiate the land adjacent to this development and they said that the owner of the property refused to sell a portion of the land to complete the, the ninety-foot arterial all the way to North Loop. The other thing that was requested from them was to, instead of doing onsite ponding, we were going to ask for some public ponds, because one of the concerns that was brought up was every time it rains, because it's clay soil, it takes a long time for the water to percolate. And it creates mosquito hazard. And in the last meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to deny this subdivision.
And I know the residents have a presentation for you.
Mr. Perez?
And just so that, that we are all clear and for some clarification, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you see it, the state of Texas is very property owner friendly. And so once a property has been approved for development, let's say they went from agricultural to residential zoning, for pretty much any municipality, whether it's Socorro or El Paso, their hands are tied in terms of the process that, that, that they begin in terms of developing that property. And, and that's irrespective of the infrastructure. If, and I, we, I, I think I, along with my colleagues, are, are in agreement that our infrastructure and the streets, our roads, is not enough, it's not adequate, we know that. But unfortunately, when you have developers that, that have already gained their subdivision approval or have gained the, the zoning approval, then they go at their speed and unfortunately, we're always trying to catch up. And that's just, I mean, it's not an excuse, but that's the way the state operates. And so it's very, we understand and we hear, well, we need to think about the streets. And believe me, we are the first ones that will fight for the streets. But the thing is that we also are obliged and obligated, rather, to follow what the state requires. And so that's, I just want to make that point, that clarification, that it's not that we're not trying to work on the infrastructure, it's just that sometimes the development is faster than what we can update our infrastructure because of, of the, of the state laws.
You need to call the speaker name? Do you have speakers to sign up for the panel? You have to call each individual.
Any speakers?
Any speakers? David Estrada.
Thank you, my name is David Estrada. I, I heard what you said, I, I understand. Property rights, we, and the state of Texas is, is open to that, very lenient, not, well, to protect property rights owners. But on, on the same token, the residents of Rancho Miraval have rights as well. So I, I want to just take a little bit of your time, go through some slides real quick. I don't mean to disrespect anybody, I do apologize if I do, okay? There's going to be some pictures as well, that, a picture's worth a thousand words, okay? Most of the, the people here at, from Rancho Miraval think this is a real easy decision. It's black or white, right or wrong, it's a real common sense decision. And, and I'm one of those people, but maybe that's because we don't understand all the laws or all the procedures that you guys are, are following. But it's still a common sense, right or wrong decision. The zoning board recommends no and all, all the residents say no. The zoning board are people that, that you, that you guys appointed, they're appointed people and we were here two weeks ago and they all had good comments, good suggestions, and they're all saying no. So I'll continue. The zoning board is asking for a community park, and this is stuff that they mentioned, it kind of took notes a couple of weeks ago, okay? They're wanting a ponding area within the proposed subdivision, the infrastructure, like you stated, additional time for review, and the streets aren't wide enough.
Mr. Estrada, your time is up. Mr. Laran?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow him to finish his. Proposal.
Ticket, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colobialo?
Before I vote, I just need to let everyone know that I am a resident of Rancho Miraval. I live on Los Adobes and I am with the constituents, yes.
Thank you. The zoning board is asking, is also stating that the streets aren't wide enough in Rancho Miraval. If you allow them access, if they get access, that means our streets need to be widened. It affects everybody, none of us want that, we don't want the sidewalks, that I know of, at least I don't. Zoning board is saying that, somebody on the zoning board stated that Rancho Miraval should be the model community for all future developments, smart growth, infrastructure should be in place first. And then they also saying that this item should be tabled for further review so that the zoning board and, and council should review as well. These are things that the zoning board stated during that meeting. What city council should be asking for, and these are items that, I believe other people that are going to speak are going to ask for. But I'll, I'll, I'll move through these. There, there's a traffic study on here, somebody addressed that earlier. There's a train study, nobody's mentioning that train, that train stops on Burr Bridge. It stops there for hours at a time, all that traffic is going to be rerouted somewhere. Instead, what I've heard members of city council say, and again, I don't mean any disrespect, I'm just taking notes and I don't understand the process, okay? But I've heard city council members say that they're afraid of a lawsuit, that they've met all the requirements, like you were talking about earlier, that we have to enforce ordinances and, and that we have to abstain from voting. The people on this side of the aisle, we don't understand what you're saying. I mean, it's, again, it's just common sense to us, okay? Let's look at some ordinances that should be enforced. This is an ordinance, an ordinance back in two thousand and two, November seventh, two thousand, two thousand and two, it was passed by city council back then. And it's basically saying that city council pledges to do the right thing. From what I know, this is an existing ordinance, I may be wrong, I don't know. This is Trent Road, that's my dog Tucker, a lot of my neighbors like my dog. Illegal dumping is bad. This stuff has been out there since I moved in, it's about three years already. This has been out there maybe a couple of years. This is within the city limits of Socorro, so I'm, I don't know all the ordinances, but there's probably an ordinance against this, rock walls that aren't finished, abandoned trailers. This is also within the city limits of Socorro, people actually live here. Backyards, as mine, my backyard can also, should also be clean, but this is somebody's horse stalls. I didn't take a picture of the horse because he was inhumane, let's say that, he was. 'cause he was inhumane, let's say that. He was beyond repair. But this is somebody's horse stall within the city limits of Socorro on a five-thousand-square-foot lot, zoned R3. This is also an R3 zoning, about five-thousand square feet. There's about two-hundred fighting roosters. Rock walls that are falling, graffiti. So, like you mentioned, ordinances that you need to follow. Well, there's a lot of other ordinances that just aren't enforced. Other neighbors within Socorro have fought and won situations like this. Corner of Rio Vista and North Loop, there's a post office, storage units, and the senior living community. This right here is a corner of Rio Vista and North Loop. This is a Chevron. There's a community here. This is a post office and storage units. Well, this subdivision, or this developer right here, wanted to build some independent living for seniors. And they were accessing, or wanting to access this road. This community has been here a long time. So, I don't know all the details, but what I'm told by some of these community members, they fought this a long time ago, probably fifteen years ago. And they stopped this developer from accessing this road. And they had him, this is, I think it's three missions. So, it goes between the post office and the storage units. And it accesses these homes right here. I mean, I can't count that quick, but there's probably like forty homeowners here, I guess. I don't know how many. But in comparison, what this developer is asking is for you to allow... This is Rancho Miraval right here. Well, this, all this land right here, this is Pecan Grove. I believe there's five-hundred-and-twenty lots. This section right here is where the train stops. All these people are gonna come through Frescavallos and down Rancho Miraval. You saw a slide earlier that said "common sense". It just does not make any sense to allow it. It's just, it's beyond my comprehension. I'm gonna show some pictures. About thirty years ago, I think these covenants for Rancho Miraval were set back in probably the late sixties, early seventies. And there was a developer back then who had a vision, a very smart man. Those who knew him probably did very well. And he had a vision for what Rancho Miraval should look like thirty years from then. And he wrote up those covenants to make sure that his vision was completed the way he wanted it. And here's a couple of pictures of the homes that we have. Here's a couple of pictures of the result of that developer's vision. All these homes are in Rancho Miraval. Notice the American flag. We like that. There's two homeowners. I believe one of them is present right now. Two of our newest neighbors bought land and built their house probably within the last twelve months. And this is what they built within the last twelve months. So, in comparison, Pecan Grove is right next to the subdivision that we're talking about, okay? And I'll show you some pictures. Again, I don't mean any disrespect. I have friends that live in this community, a lot of subcontractors. But this is what bad decisions look like five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now. This is what a bad developer is gonna sell. This is what you're voting for or against. Somebody earlier mentioned a legacy. This is the legacy that what your vote is gonna leave. You leave, each vote is a footprint on Socorro or a fingerprint. And it doesn't go away. It's there forever, and to change it... If you don't impose restrictions on a developer, there's a city council that's gonna be here probably twenty-five years from now, asking why in the world did the city of Socorro do this? Why would they allow this? If you allow a developer to build without, or with onsite ponding, there's a typo right there, without parks and restricted covenants, good builders, builders that are gonna build to completion, like Classic Saratoga Desert View, they're not gonna buy these lots. So, the option for the developer is to sell, seller finance. So, seller finance is a bad decision, bad developers, and it leaves a bad legacy. These homes fall in no man's land. It's a county, from what I understand. They're not within the city of Clint. They're not within the city of Socorro. There's no building code enforcement, no city ordinances. I don't believe they pay city taxes. I wonder who their school taxes are gonna go to. I think it's Clint. Here's some samples of what people who buy on a seller finance note, this developer will sell on a seller finance note. I've been asking and asking what this developer intends to do. And the answer that I get is he's going to continue to, or offer it to anybody. But builders are not gonna buy the lots with onsite ponding. It's too much of a liability and too much of a cost to correct it. So, five-hundred-and-twenty home sites on seller finance. This is a sample. We have a community that was sold on seller finance there on Pecan Grove. Look at the color of the plywood, the dead tree on the right, and the height of the weeds. This home's been sitting there a long time. This house burnt recently. You can assume, maybe, you know, that lack of building codes might have caused this fire. For example, no inspections, electrical inspections during the construction process. This is actually a store that's in operation. If you look right here, there's an open sign. And they've got this prepped for a marquee sign. This is within the subdivision of Pecan Grove. People add on without permitting. They add on to their footprint. There's no ordinance is out there. The city of Socorro won't be controlling their inspectors. They won't be going out there to enforce this. Okay. I wanna do the math a little bit. Five-hundred-and-twenty home sites, twenty-five thousand per site roughly, that I know of. It might be less, maybe a little more. That's thirteen million in sales. If you sell or finance each one of these ten percent on a twenty-year term, interest on a lot alone, if they carry out their twenty-year term, is thirty-two-nine on interest alone. You multiply the thirty-two-nine by five-hundred-and-twenty home sites, you have seventeen-point-one million in interest. Add that to the thirteen million, and you get a potential gross of thirty-point-one million. That's a lot of money. That is a lot of money. It's gross. He's got development costs, we understand. The other thing I wanna add is that, from where we stand and what we're looking at, the city council here in Socorro has a lot of power. Developers are landlocked in El Paso. The city of El Paso is landlocked. They have nowhere to grow. So, all these cotton fields are very attractive to developers and builders. I think you guys can easily dictate to these developers what and how to develop. If they would only want to. I'm gonna leave the onsite ponding to somebody else. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bernie Salcedo?
Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to talk about the ponding issue for this development and the proposed that they have there. This is onsite ponding. We get a lot of rain. We get a lot of mosquitoes. On a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot footprint on a forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot lot is about five percent. It's actually closer to seven to eight after you add all the driveways, sheds, and that type of thing. The proposed subdivision, there are one-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot print on a ten-thousand-square-foot lots. That's fifteen percent. Goes back to what I just finished saying. This is what you get. This rain gauge I have in front of my house, this is actually from August of this year. Mr. Rodriguez, you were out there, Coca Road, and so was other council members out there as well assisting those people. This is what we had to deal with. On this day, it was a little over two-and-a-half inches. The following week, once again, three-and-a-half inches. After that, almost two-and-three-eighths, I mean, two-and-seven-eighths inches of rain. And then, we had a one-inch. This is that day that it was actually raining. That's that Saturday afternoon. It was pouring. Once again, we have one acre tracks. Our footprint is minimal in comparison to what was being proposed.
Mr. Salcedo, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Damian Pilatsky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and the members of the council, again. Ponding, you've mentioned that you get to a point where it's already been approved. Steps need to be taken before things get to that point. When we make requirements that the only thing that a developer has to do is make plans for egress that are in the future, which may be thirty, ninety, a hundred years in the future, that doesn't solve the problem now. That could have been paid, you know, the things that were talked about now could have been talked about then. The developer says they can't do, create a large common pond because of the water table. Well, that's not true. You can raise the elevation of the property, and then you're above that water table, so you can do it. It would only take fifty, a fleet of fifty ten-ton trucks, ten trips a day for three-hundred days to raise the elevation enough so that it makes a common pond. There are things that they don't look at because it's not in their interest. They wanna put the cost on you and on us. We need to make the decisions ahead of time so that we don't get to a point where the city and the people of Socorro are paying for the greed of a developer.
Mr. Pilatsky, your time is up. Lincoln Wallace?
Kind of being new to the process, I think, going forward, I don't know what the format is for transparency. Maybe something is set up in terms of a town hall or something, where by the rest of us, normal people, regular folks, can kinda get some insight and know what you guys are faced with. So that when you are making your decisions, we can know that by good faith that you guys are looking out for our best interest. Not that we wouldn't, but since we aren't available to the process, something as simple as when we were sitting here, we weren't privy to the plans that he was showing. And we're looking at, okay, you have that information, but we don't. So, going forward, maybe that will assist in giving us more information. So, some of the questions that we do have, we won't even waste our time because we already know the answer, that you've reviewed it, and everybody's kind of on the same sheet of music.
Jesús Cabrera?
Just for the record, I live on Frescavallos Street. That's where actually this developer wants to get in. Can you imagine a car every three minutes? Can you live with a car passing through your house every three minutes? You saw the numbers, millions of dollars. They can do anything they want. That easy. If the other person doesn't wanna sell, well, it's their problem. But the only thing I wanna say is, we vote for you. This is a time that you need to respond to us. 'Cause the other way, probably, a lot of people are not gonna vote nothing, or nobody's gonna vote for you guys again on November. It's gonna be a lot of problems, either the developer is gonna go through Rancho Miraval or if they're not gonna develop the land. We're gonna be in problems anyway. So, I don't wanna have a car every three minutes passing through my house. So, take a wise decision. 'Cause we're gonna have to still live in it. I mean, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I stopped a lot of projects that I've been doing just because I know what is gonna happen. I can't even fence on my property. I've been thinking to fence on it for over twenty years. Now, when is the time to do it, then I have the time to do it, I cannot do it because I don't know what's gonna happen.
Mr. Cabrera, your time is up. Sandy Salcedo? Joey Sanchez? Naomi Scott?
All I can say is that we really do hope that you do take in advice, not just your constituents, but your planning and zoning. You have hired them for a reason. Listen to them. They are telling you something. I know that there's other rules that you have to go by, but you have to make the right decision. You have to listen to what everybody is saying. We can't all be wrong, especially the people that you have hired, your planning and zoning. Help us. Help them to make the right decision, and you will make the right decision. Thank you.
Johnny Talles? Salvador Griego? Jose Gonzalez?
I'm so glad that we were here at this meeting today just to understand what the Socorro Independent School District is already facing. They wanna bring in five-hundred-and-twenty homes to that subdivision. Where are these children gonna go to school? What sidewalks are they gonna walk on? You're talking about the developments that are already there and are falling apart? You wanna build a six-foot rock wall behind our subdivision? Is it gonna look like the picture that was up there anytime soon? You know, when are we gonna fix tomorrow's problems today? That's why you're sitting here. You guys can make a change, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Tony Valdez?
Thank you for listening to us. I really appreciate that. I know that there's policies, rules, and regulations, all the things that we might not understand. But we do understand common sense. And basically, what we're seeing here is a recipe for disaster. I mean, all these new homes will bring a lot more problems onto your plate that you would have to deal with, and we would have to deal with it as well because we live in that area. Now, this is the time to make the difference. This is the time to stand up as we've stood up and addressed our concerns with you. So, it's now your turn to show us, make our vote count. Because that's who we voted. We had faith in you. I still do, no doubt about it. I know that you have to follow your rules and regulations, but still, we have to do it the right way. And the right way is listening to your constituents, listening to the people that you hired zoning. They understand what needs to be done, and let's do it. But let's do it the right way. It's all about progress. It's all about legacy. It's all about making the right decisions. And you saw the pictures there of the wrong decisions. And I definitely would not wanna live in an area, I mean, no disrespect to the people that do live there, but yeah, it's a little rundown.
Mr. Valdez, your time is up. Mr. Valdez, your time is up. Mr. Duran?
I've been looking at this for a few days now and it says it does not include a public park. We have a Parks Master Plan that I've been going over and we're so behind on the amount of public parks that we need. We're way behind. When you, when you look at a place that they have these different sites and they gauge how, what city, if you want to live there, and one of the biggest things they talk about is the amount of public parks. This subdivision has not one single park in it. It doesn't have, you know, they call for onsite ponding. What about the water in the streets? Where is that going to go? We need to have drain fields where drainage ponds, that could double as parks. We have them already, but they need to be able to take in that much water and I realize there's clay. So there's going to, they're going to have to design it so that the water will percolate down. Another thing that I'm looking at is there's another subdivision behind this one. Those people there have to get out of this property too. I don't see one single road in the middle of this subdivision to get people in and out of it. The subdivision is in the county if I'm not mistaken. Eventually, we will annex it and I think we need to make sure that everything's in place now before annexation does happen because Socorro is growing. We've already annexed and we'll be annexing again. If we do not make sure that this subdivision is done properly, like you said, it's going to happen, but if we make it happen in the right way, then everybody will be served. We need to make sure that it has a park that will supply the demand of the people that are living in the area. Our Parks Master Plan, we're way, way behind on where we need to be. The street, I don't see another, I don't see it going anywhere in the subdivision. All they want to do is feed off of a street that's in Socorro. This is in the county. They need to build their own street down the middle or down the other side. We have enough people in Socorro using the streets that we have. We don't need to have another 500, 500 houses, 520 houses. If you multiply that by two cars per house, which I, I mean, I think everybody here is a two-car household. That's over 1,000 cars going to use a Socorro street whereas there's nothing on the other side. I think this needs to be redone. I think it needs to take into consideration the needs of the community that they're building. They're building a community here. 520 houses is a lot of people. They need to take into consideration parks. They need to take into consideration where the water from the streets is going to flow because I don't see anywhere on here where the water, you know, they're talking about onsite ponding areas, mosquitoes. I think how many people have been bit here by mosquitoes because of ponding water? That water needs to go into a central pond where it can be taken care of. And a lot of things need to happen. They're talking about the streets. Well, North Loop is Tex Dot. We can't, we can't do anything about North Loop. So that's a two-lane road. This is going to be a two-lane road going into these properties. That's a lot of cars for two lanes. This needs to be rethought. It needs to be redone and then brought back to us. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, I got a couple of things to say. This issue, I know been going back for years, but I want to touch on Mr. Duran's thing. You know, you haven't looked at the Parks Master Plan because they haven't presented to us. Or does he have a copy of it?
He has the draft.
Oh, the draft? Okay, well, the draft's not even done, but I think that we all should take a look at it before that. One of the things is, I will say is, you know, one, I want to say that that was a nice PowerPoint. Two, I like it that you emphasize that it's black and white or common sense and stuff. It's one of those things that I like. One of the things that I will critique it is that you're doing a disservice to yourself by putting the amount of money that the developers to withstand because if we don't allow him to do whatever he has the right, that's the money that we're going to end up paying him for not putting that development in there. Now regardless of what you guys think, it goes back to the same thing. Some of you said and came up here, oh, we don't know the law and we don't know a lot of stuff. Well, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Our attorney, and that's exactly what I'm going to tell him right, I'll ask him right now, is what are, Jim, what are the options that we have if we deny this? What's the outcome of that?
You've got a number of options. The first, the first depends on what's happened so far and it's one thing that I can discuss in the next session.
Okay. So you can answer me if we don't allow this developer and he's already had his plans in, are we going to be liable?
Yeah, I mean, it depends. Depending on what's been done so far, what information our engineering firm has asked for, I mean, you know, if they're presenting the engineering firm or if Joe Dewey, again.
Yeah. Is that what you're going to do? Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah. Depending on what they've asked for, depending on what they've declined to provide. There's a number of permutations, but the point is, yeah, if you get to the point where the city is just taking the decision that, well, if I'm going to develop the land, yeah, you may be purchasing the inherited.
Okay, that's, because I, I want them to understand where we're at because I don't, I don't want them to, to, you know, and I get it. Some of you came back and told us that our commissions are in favor of not making the development, but what, and that they have a lot of things that they want to ask for. But one of the things is, is that people tend to forget that our commission is there to obey our laws and to make sure that they're abide by, by the developers. Not to come up and say, oh, I want this and I want that. I mean, it's something that we're asking, we're helping. We understand that, believe me, I love your homes. Love your homes. I've said it and I'll keep saying it. I don't think that it's fair for 520, you know, residents to use your, your, your street. But unfortunately, the way it is and it's structured, I mean, they can draft everything they want, but I mean, it's something that we, we talked to the developers, it's something that we, we found ways. We had meetings. For the other gentleman that asked it, where's our meetings? You can look at it on our website on Mondays before the Thursday and you can see all the backup, everything that are shown to us so that you'll know. The only thing you will not see in those backups on our website is what we talk in executive. That's about the only thing. And like I said, it will always be up on the website on Monday before the meetings. One of the things also that I want to touch is, you know, I understand, I understand completely. I've been there with you from the start, you know, I had to do so much stuff. I came back and, and we looked at the best outcome. I don't know what happened on, on the meeting with the planning and zoning. I mean, that's something that we're going to have to address. I don't want people to get false hopes because our planning and zoning commissioners aren't qualified, don't understand our rules and regulations and our, you know, procedures. And that's something that we face because there's not enough qualified individuals or even for that matter, we don't even have people that want to come to our commissions. Okay? And that's the truth. I mean, you know, I, I will say it, you know, a million times. I'm not here for legacy projects. I'm not here because I want to have a legacy of I did this and I did that. I'm not about here. I'm about here to move the city forward, make the best for our residents. I don't consider myself as a commissioner. I consider myself as a rep because I'm representing you guys and that's what I'm going to do. Now, I understand that, you know what, and, and I tell people this all the time, I am not going to tell you something that you want to hear. I will never do that to you, to you or to anybody else. I will tell you the truth. And if the truth doesn't, you know, kill you, it'll make you understand what I'm trying to tell you and it's the truth. I, I will not hide behind anything. I will tell you the truth, the way it is, the way the laws are, you know, I just, I just want you to understand that. I understand, I don't like this situation. I don't want 520 residents using your subdivision. I don't and that's where I stand. But I just want you to understand that this is the plan before us and it's something that we are going to address. I just have to ask Jim for some legal advice, something that you guys aren't going to be able to, to hear, but like I said, anybody else wants to?
Ms. Reyes?
Okay, first, I'm sorry, but I do disagree with you. I think our planning and zoning is doing a fantastic job with the abilities, with the information that's given to them. They don't take their commission lightly. They're there for a purpose and they do understand that the constituents come first before the developers. I do not mind growth. It's a way of life, but at the same token, it's a give and take situation. Now, if one is not willing, then that, that makes a very toxic environment within there. But what they're not looking at is that everybody's talked about the park, everybody's talked about where the ingress and egress is, all this. What about the safety issues? If there's a fire, there's no exits, if there's whatever type of an emergency, how is the in and out going to be? You know, I don't see anything other than that one road. Where is the emergency vehicles going to be to be able to get to you? My understanding is that, yes, I've been there, it's a gorgeous place, it is, and I know that you don't want it to change, but at the same token, you need to respect that this commission is there for a purpose and their purpose is to make sure that they look for the citizens, look out for the citizens of Socorro. If we don't start abiding by what they recommend, we're going to revert back 20, 30 years where they come in and do whatever and you see what you get. I'm sorry, but I, I do not believe that the developers come first. We were elected to represent our constituents first and that's my thought.
Ms. Alonzo?
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. I did what you say, what you said. Our, our planning and zoning, we, we appointed them for a reason. I think we, we saw that, number one, they don't get paid. So they're there dedicating their time. They're not there to, to, to get a paycheck, so obviously they're doing it because they, they're in it for the city. I don't know why we keep going back and forth. I don't know when this plot or planned or was approved preliminary, was approved or what was approved at the time. Here we keep talking back and forth. We don't know what the engineer presented at the time. Okay, we have no idea what they presented, but here we have six items, six very important items that have not been brought forth and here we are spending all our time going back and forth. They have not complied. Here we are a year later. I don't know when it was approved. I hear it was councils before. They have not complied. We should not even be here talking about it. If they're not complying now, they're not going to comply then. Now, these lots, these lots are not for developers, they're for individuals. They're not for developers. If it was developers, it'd be, you know, a better situation, but I will also tell you that our, sometimes developers for these type of lots, when they're not custom, the homes look good for five years and then after five years they start falling apart, the, you know, the stucco starts falling, the roof is flying and, and the neighborhood looks awful. So can we give them a timeframe to comply with all these requirements or can we just kill it? How much longer are we going to go back and forth?
Mr. Martinez?
Depends. I need more information about something like planning discussed in the next session.
Well, we just can't go back and forth. We, you know, they should have complied a long time ago and, and again, we need to go back and find out originally when this plot was first brought forth and find out what exactly did they say they were going to develop. Because just recently, we found out these, these weren't going, these lots weren't going, were not going to be sold to developers, developers, but they were going to be owner
To answer your question, this is the plan that you have in front of you. This is the exact same plan that was presented to the meeting that we had with the residents. And it shows the recommendations that we were asking from them are in the new...